Welcome everyone to the public hearing tonight. I want to welcome everyone. My name is Holly Smith and I will be the moderator for this public hearing. On the draft environmental assessment of the marine geophysical surveys by the RV Marcus G Langseth for the Central Coastal California Seismic Imaging Project. I'm an environmental compliance officer at the National Science Foundation and have been coordinating the NSF environmental compliance responsibilities for this activity. Before proceeding further, I would like to thank the County of San Luis Obispo and the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to use their wonderful facility here tonight and the assistance that they have provided to us. This hearing is being held in accordance with the provisions of the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, and the regulations that are published by the Council on Environmental Quality. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on the draft environmental assessment, the marine geophysical surveys by the Marcus G Langseth for the Central Coastal California Seismic Imaging Project, which we will refer to simply as the Draft EA for the rest of the evening. This presentation will be available on the NSF website for your use for future reference, and I'll provide a link at the end of the presentation for you to find it. The hearing will be conducted in two parts. First, I will make a brief presentation about NSF and our scientific interest in this project, and will summarize the approach to the analysis presented in the Draft EA. Dr. Stu Nushenko of Pacific Gas and Electric Company will present information on the scientific aspects of this project. The second part of this project, I'm sorry, the second part of this hearing will be your opportunity to provide NSF with comments on the Draft EA and make statements for the record. The input you give us will provide the decision-makers at NSF the benefits of your knowledge and insights on the information and analysis presented in the Draft EA, along with any of your concerns. Throughout this hearing, I ask that you keep in mind that this is a public hearing and not a debate or a question and answer session. This public hearing is being held to provide the public with an additional venue to comment on the Draft EA. Concerns about non-environmental issues or issues not related to the actions, information, or analysis proposed in the Draft EA are not the focus of this hearing and are not the appropriate venue for discussion or resolution. Unnecessary focus on unrelated topics will not add value to the record and will take away time from the other people's opportunities to comment on the Draft EA. So while we encourage our audience to participate during the public hearing by providing oral or written comments on the Draft EA, both supportive and critical, we also encourage you to focus your comments on the issue at hand, which is the Draft EA. When you came into the room, you should have been asked to register your attendance and indicate whether you're interested in speaking tonight. And if you have filled out a card or did not indicate that you wanted to speak, and now you wish to speak, so your comments will be recorded by the court reporter, please raise your hand at this time and we will get a card for you so you can fill it out and we can call upon you. You may also choose to submit any comments in writing. If you want to comment on the Draft EA but do not want to speak tonight, or if you do speak tonight but want to make additional comments, you may elect to provide written comments tonight, provide comments by mail or email by August 10, 2012, or present them to the court reporter as part of your presentation. All comments made at the hearing or provided in writing will be given equal consideration. I would like to introduce other members of our team now. With us today from NSF, we have Bob Hauptman, Section Head for Integrative Program Section of the Division of Ocean Sciences, there in the back. We have Caroline Blanco, Assistant General Counsel, and Anthony Gibson, Senior Advisor for Division of Legislative Affairs, back there. From Pacific Gas and Electric, we have Gerald Strickland, Director of Nuclear Projects. Stuart Nushenko, Chief Seismologist for this project, up here. Blair Jones, Senior Manager, External Communications, back over there. And Chris Bardas, Senior Land Planner. From Columbia University's Lamont-Doarty Earth Observatory, or Lamont, the operator of the NSF-owned vessel, Marcus G Langseth, we have Sean Higgins, Director of Marine Operations, and Megan Cummings, Marine Environmental and Safety Coordinator. From Padre Associates, the environmental consulting firm which helped prepare supporting environmental analyses for the Draft EA, we have Simon Poulter, Manager Environmental Services Group, Jennifer Clay, Marine Biologist, in the back, and Michaela Hoffman, Marine Biologist, in the front. Team members will remain present for the remainder of the public hearing. After the formal presentation, you may find some team members backed by the posters, and you are welcome to talk with them. However, any formal comments which you may have for the record must be addressed to the court reporter or myself. At this time, I would like to move on from this discussion on the public hearing format and to present to you some information about the National Science Foundation and the proposed marine geophysical surveys. NSF is an independent federal agency created in 1950 to promote the progress of science. NSF funds approximately 20% of the federally-supported basic research at U.S. colleges and universities. We receive approximately 40,000 proposals each year for research, education, and training projects, which are judged by a rigorous merit review process. NSF awards approximately 11,000 awards a year, which is approximately a 27% success rate. NSF's current budget is about $7 billion. And NSF-funded researchers have made important contributions to science and have achieved a multitude of distinguished awards and honors, notably more than 180 Nobel Prizes. Next slide. The Draft EA examines the potential environmental impacts that may result from the proposed Central Coastal California Seismic Imaging Project. PG&E and Lamont have proposed the use of the RV Marcus G Langseth to conduct a 3D high-energy seismic survey in the vicinity of Diablo Canyon Power Plant and known offshore fault zones near Diablo Canyon. The activity would consist of deploying seismic or sound sources and receivers at onshore and offshore locations to generate data that can be used to improve imaging of major geologic structures and fault zones. The purpose of the proposed action is to survey the geology surrounding Diablo Canyon to provide additional insights of any relationships or connections between known faults, as well as enhance knowledge of offshore faults in proximity to the Central California coast and Diablo Canyon. Next slide. As I just mentioned, the purpose for conducting the seismic survey is for the collection of scientific data. There are a number of project objectives associated with this project, and these are listed on this slide. The data collected would fulfill requirements established by California Assembly Bill 1632 and directives of the California Public Utilities Commission. In light of the recent Fukushima Daiachi disaster in Japan, U.S. regulators recognize that the proposed activities may potentially result in important findings for human health and safety. The data collected by the surveys would be made publicly available. NSF is particularly interested in this data becoming available for the NSF scientific research community and the scientific community in general public. The proposed action includes surveying four specific areas around Diablo Canyon. These four areas would attempt, would each attempt to obtain specific geologic information. In Box 1, the survey area would be immediately offshore of Diablo Canyon and would investigate the shoreline and Hosgree Fault Zones. In Box 2, the survey area would be from Astero Bay to offshore Santa Maria River Mouth and would investigate along the Hosgree Fault Zone and the shoreline Hosgree and Los Osos Fault intersections. In Box 3, the survey area would be from offshore Cambria to Astero Bay and would survey along the Hosgree and San Simeon Fault Zones. In Box 4, the survey area would be in Astero Bay and would survey across the Hosgree and Los Osos Fault Zones. Subsequent to issuance of the Draft EA, PG&E eliminated Survey Box 3 from their operational plan and revised their application to the California Coastal Commission. Next slide. Again, PG&E and Lamont have proposed to use the RV Langseth to conduct the 3D survey. The vessel is owned by NSF and operated under a cooperative agreement with Columbia University's Lamont-Doarty Earth Observatory. It is part of the national academic research fleet and is the primary vessel used for high-energy seismic surveys in the academic community. The vessel operates globally, conducting 2D and 3D seismic surveys to collect geologic data to be analyzed by researchers. For this study, the seismic equipment would be configured for a standard 3D survey with 18 air guns operating in an alternating pattern with a total air discharge volume of 3,300 cubic inches. Next slide. As depicted in this graphic, the air guns would be used to expel compressed air into the water to create acoustic signals to reflect off geologic discontinuities on or beneath the seafloor. These returning signals, reflections, would be captured by towed hydrophone streamers to create a picture of the Earth's internal structure, including faults for scientists to interpret. Geophones would also be deployed in the shallow near-shore marine environment to record signal reflections. The proposed activities also include an onshore component. To expand data collection capabilities in the near-shore environment, vehicle-mounted accelerated weight drop and fiber-sized systems would be operated as onshore seismic sources, and geophones would be used as recording systems. Data collected during the proposed activities would be made available to the public. Next slide. The Draft EA analyzed the potential effects of the proposed activities. I will just give a general overview of our approach to the analysis included in the Draft EA, touching on topics briefly. Further details on all points can be found in the Draft EA. While the location for the surveys were selected obviously for their proximity to Diablo Canyon Power Plant, the specific survey areas or boxes and track configurations were contemplated and designed to address specific scientific questions. Survey timing and source levels and configurations were selected taking into consideration operational constraints such as weather and scientific goals such as the ability to penetrate through to certain depths of the seafloor. The surveys are proposed to be conducted from September 15 through December 15 to avoid the period of highest marine mammal and fish migration activity and to accommodate nesting bird constraints. Potential effects on fish larvae and eggs would be mitigated by conducting the survey during this timeframe when concentrations are generally low compared to other seasons. Modeling was conducted to predict, take estimates of marine mammals, taking into consideration the proposed energy source level and certain environmental parameters. The Draft EA includes monitoring and mitigation measures to minimize and avoid potential effects of the proposed activities, including those that may result from the seismic operations on the marine environment, including marine mammals. The affected environment, environmental consequences of the proposed action were evaluated. Impacts on the associated marine resources, including marine invertebrates, fish, sea turtles, seabirds, and marine mammals were considered. Additionally, the impacts to socioeconomic and cultural resources such as commercial fishing, recreational activities, subsistence hunting and fishing, and archaeological sites such as shipwrecks were identified and analyzed. While fishing activities would need to be curtailed in a specific area where seismic surveying was being conducted, such as within a box, to avoid entanglement and damage to gear, other areas within the survey areas such as the broader project boundaries would be open to fishing. Port St. Louis and Morro Bay would be open at all times. Survey activities were assessed in conjunction with other known activities to evaluate cumulative impacts. Next slide. In the Draft EA, in addition to the proposed action, a number of alternatives were considered, including Alternative 1, the no-action alternative where the 3D survey would not be conducted; Alternative 2, where the only survey boxes 1, 2, and 4 would be conducted; Alternative 3, where the timing of the survey would be altered, such as to a different season; and Alternative 4, where survey activities would be restricted to daytime operations only, which would extend the overall length of the surveys. Three additional alternatives were considered but were eliminated from further analysis as they did not meet the program objectives. Monitoring and mitigation measures to reduce the potential impacts to the environment were described in the Draft EA. These included standard mitigation and monitoring measures used on the RV Langseth, as well as additional measures identified for this specific survey. Standard mitigation measures would include such actions as using protected species observers for visual monitoring and passive acoustic monitoring for marine mammals during the surveys, and using power downs and shutdowns should animals approach certain distances to the air guns. Additional mitigation measures would include such activities as aerial surveys and sound source verification tests of the modeled exclusion and safety zones. Mitigation measures were also identified for the proposed onshore activities. PG&E and Lamont would develop and implement a Marine Wildlife Contingency Plan, or MWCP, which would incorporate all the mitigation and monitoring requirements identified by the various federal and state regulating bodies, such as the National Marine Fishery Service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, California Department of Fish and Game, and California State Lands Commission. Next slide. As noted previously, the Draft EA evaluated the environmental consequences and cumulative impacts of the proposed activities, and several conclusions were drawn. Direct and indirect effects of the proposed action would mainly be a result of the potential impacts from the air guns. Potential impacts to species would be expected to be limited to short-term and localized behavioral disturbances such as Level B harassment as defined by the National Marine Fishery Service, and would not be significant to populations. The monitoring and mitigation measures planned, including pre-cruise planning efforts to reduce impacts and operational actions such as power downs and shutdowns of acoustic sources, influenced this conclusion. The results of the cumulative impacts analysis, which took into consideration other activities within the survey region, indicate that there would not be any significant cumulative effects to the affected environment from the proposed action. PG&E, Lamont, and NSF are seeking other permits and authorizations for the proposed activities, including an incidental harassment authorization under the Marine Mammal Protection Act and Section 7 consultation under the Endangered Species Act, and a geophysical survey permit from the California State Lands Commission. Next slide. Now, Dr. Nushenko is going to provide us with some information about the scientific aspects of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Holly, for presenting that summary of the EA. What I'd like to do now is spend a couple minutes and just step back and inform you about the Central Coastal California Seismic Imaging Project, which the proposed project that we're talking about here tonight is one element of. This is work that we instituted starting in 2010 as part of AB 1632, and was started, obviously, before the 2011 Magna II IX Tohoku earthquake. So we were aware of issues because of AB 1632 and started a very aggressive program to improve our understanding of earthquake hazards, geology, and the tectonics of Central California coast. In many ways, the work, this work was started following the San Simeon earthquake in 2003. That was really the wake-up call for Central Coastal California that there was a significant earthquake problem here as well, in addition to the Bay Area and Northern California and Los Angeles. Some of the work that we did was, of course, catalyzed by the identification of shoreline fault zone, and some of the original, the early studies that we did shown here in item number one was to look at the intersection of the shoreline fault zone shown here with the larger Hosgree Fault Zone that runs along the edge of the continental shelf. For reference, Diablo Canyon is located right there. In the fall of 2011, we also instituted a very aggressive program to do onshore seismic profiling here in the Irish Hills, where we profiled about 120 miles worth of roads in and around this area to get a better understanding of faults beneath the Irish Hills like the Los Osos Fault and others. Next slide. Later in 2011, we started to do what we call a P-Cable survey, low-energy seismic reflection surveys of the seafloor down here in San Luis Bay. So originally, we looked at the northern extent of the shoreline fault zone. Last December, we went to investigate the southern extent of the shoreline fault zone as it went into Avala Bay to better understand the setting there and to also identify information that could help constrain how fast that fault moved. This is key information the Nuclear Regulatory Commission requires in order to do seismic hazard assessments for power plants. In fact, that study, as you'll see an example of here in a moment, was so successful that we're going to go out again this summer in August and do additional studies down here in Southern San Luis Bay and in Astero Bay, again, looking for areas where we can obtain more marine information about fault behavior and activity. And then finally, number five covers the area for the high-energy seismic survey that is the proposed project we're talking about this evening. Next slide. This is a preliminary result from that survey we did last December in San Luis Bay. And this is, if you will, is a map view beneath the seafloor. This is about maybe 10 feet beneath the seafloor itself. And what we're looking at here is these dark lines are stream channels from San Luis Obispo Creek, which many of you know over there in Avala Bay. And these stream channels were cut into the continental shelf about 20,000 years ago during the last low sea level stand. The idea here is that we can successfully identify the shoreline fault itself. And you see these two thin lines that are highlighted here using this new 3D high-resolution technology. What we're looking for, in addition to identifying where the location of the shoreline fault in the subsea, but also did the fault offset these old stream channels? If it does, then we can look at the amount of offset, know the age of the stream channel, and start to get an idea about how fast does that fault move, which then translates into how much of a threat is it to the community? So this, we feel, just being able to develop 3D images like this, or similar to CAT scans or CT scans, where you can manipulate the image and look at it in different angles and orientations, is a powerful new tool that we have in our arsenal to investigate geology and faulting activity in these kinds of areas. And as I said, we're going to continue to do this work later on this summer. Next slide. As Holly mentioned, we have selected the RV Langseth to do the high-energy seismic work that we're talking as part of this proposed project. So this now is different than what you just showed on the previous slide, because the low-energy work that you saw on the previous slide can only penetrate the top few hundred meters of the seafloor. And what we need to do is get an understanding of the structure of the crust at depths comparable to the depths where the earthquakes are occurring. So these are many kilometers beneath the seafloor, and hence we need louder sources, louder energy sources to be able to penetrate and look to that depth. The Langseth is a world-class vessel, there's no question about it, and we selected that following consideration of a number of industry and academic vessels that we reached out to during our request for proposal process last summer. We feel it's really the best tool for the job at hand. And in addition to having state-of-the-art seismic capabilities to allow us to do this high-energy 3D investigation, it also has a complete geophysics package. So it allows us to take measurements of the magnetic field of the Earth, the gravity field of the Earth, as well as multi-beam imaging of the seafloor itself. A lot of this will undoubtedly will add to the knowledge base that we have for both earthquake and tsunami issues here off the central coast of California. So it's going to be a major new addition to our knowledge base for California. And in addition, this is probably now the first time in more than two and a half decades that we've had the opportunity to do this kind of work in the coast of California. So using this new technology is undoubtedly going to improve our understanding of the setting here in central coast of California. In addition to having a world-class vessel, we also have a world-class science team who has been advising us and helping us plan for this project. And this includes the IPRP, or the Independent Peer Review Panel, that was set up by the Public Utilities Commission as part of the administration of funds for AB 1632, and Dr. Bruce Gibson here at San Luis Obispo is a member of that panel and has been instrumental in advising us in our direction. In addition, as Holly mentioned, we have scientists from Columbia University, Lamont-Doarty Earth Observatory, the University of Nevada at Reno, and Scripps Institute Oceanography. So we've really reached out to put together what we think is a world-class team to help us do this work. Next slide. You saw this slide just before, and again, here, the idea and the difference between low energy and high energy is that we're able to penetrate deeper into the crust of the Earth and listen for those echoes and reflections from deeper strata, again, to help understand that deep structure and, and in the depth range where the earthquakes are occurring, because we need to know the geometry of the faults as well as their most recent period of activity to provide an overall characterization of the seismic hazard for the area. So this is just a schematic diagram of how this process works, how the physics works. I think Holly explained that, so if you can go on to the next slide. At the end of the day, what we are going to be producing are data volumes, like you see here, and this is an example of data that was collected by the Langseth off the coast of Costa Rica just recently. And this really captures part of the excitement of this new technology in that this is a 3D data volume. Prior to that, we were able to collect what we call 2D data, which is analogous to taking an X-ray in your doctor's office. With 3D data, it's more like a CT scan. So again, you can manipulate this data volume, look at it in different angles, as you see, you can take cutaways from it, and basically have a lot more ability to analyze and evaluate the structure underneath the seafloor to better understand the geologic setting, the earthquake setting, and issues related to that. This adds to the basic science component, because in addition to trying to better understand earthquake hazards for Diablo Canyon specifically, the science team is also interested in improving their understanding of earthquake fault dynamics in general, which is information we can apply globally, the intersection of different faults, how that dynamic works, and how rupture from earthquakes are influenced by that intersection of faults. We mentioned before how the Los Osos and other fault zones are intersecting the Hosgree along the edge of the continental shelf. This is going to give us an ability to look at this in three dimensions at depth, something which usually is not available to the community. So there's a lot of excitement about doing that. And also, the information that we're going to collect from doing these kinds of surveys will allow us to more accurately locate earthquakes in the offshore area, so we'll be able to pinpoint and associate earthquakes with specific faults with more specificity. Next slide. And back to you, Holly. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. As mentioned previously, as a requirement under the National Environmental Policy Act, NSF must consider the impacts of a proposed action may have on the human environment. As such, NSF has prepared the Draft EA we have been discussing to help inform what potential impacts may result from the use of the NSF-owned vehicle, RV Langseth, in support of the proposed activities. To briefly review all the steps under NEPA we have or will follow, a Draft EA was obviously prepared for this project. It was posted on the NSF website for a 45-day public comment period. A notice of availability of the Draft EA in the public hearings were sent to interested parties, and newspaper ads were posted in The Tribune and The New Times. Upon close of the public comment period, we will prepare the final EA, taking into consideration public comments. Public comments and our responses to these comments will be incorporated into the final EA. When completed, the final EA will be posted on the NSF website. The final EA will be taken into consideration by NSF in making the final agency decision regarding whether to allow the RV Langseth to be used for the proposed project. As mentioned during previous slides, in addition to NEPA, there are various other regulatory processes and statutes which this proposed action must comply. For example, a geophysical survey permit is being sought by PG&E from the California State Lands Commission, and as a result of that permit request, the California Environmental Quality Act was triggered. The California State Lands Commission prepared and issued a final environmental impact report for the proposed action. While that process is somewhat similar to the NEPA process, it is a separate process. However, there are also interconnectedness with some of the regulatory processes. For example, our final EA is needed as part of the consultation process under the Marine Mammal Protection Act. The proposed action must receive all necessary authorization permits The proposed action must receive all necessary authorization permits and approvals in order to proceed. And should it go forward, it must comply with any and all monitoring mitigation measures proposed by any of the regulatory agencies. Next slide. So this now concludes the formal presentation, component of the public hearing. We'll now begin the part of the hearing that gives you the opportunity to provide NSF with the information to make statements for the record. This input ensures that NSF may benefit from your knowledge of the issues and proposed activities and your comments on the analysis. Before we begin the public comment component, I would like to describe the procedures. Public officials that have noted on the speaker cards an interest in speaking will be given an opportunity to speak first. Members of the public who have indicated on the speaker cards an interest in speaking will be called upon next to speak, in the order the cards were received. For efficiency, we will call the first two speakers. While the first speaker is speaking, the second person should line up behind the first speaker. When that first speaker is finished, we will call upon the next person to wait behind the person at the podium. This way, we will be able to move people more quickly through the process and better ensure everyone interested has the opportunity to speak. Please speak only after I have recognized you, and please address your comments to me and the court reporter. Please speak clearly into the microphone, stating first your name and address and the capacity in which you appear if you are representing anyone other than yourself. We need this to ensure that the court reporter gets an accurate record of what is said tonight. Each person will be allowed to speak for three minutes. This time limit applies to everyone, public officials, spokespersons, and individuals speaking for themselves. You do not have to speak for the full three minutes. We will use the time counter here at the bottom of the screen, when we get to it, to track the time. And you will see a yellow light as you approach the end of your time, before it turns red. At the end of your three minutes, out of respect for others who would like to make comments, I ask that you please honor any request from me to stop speaking. If you think you have more comments than you can present in the time allotted, make the most important comments first. If you do not get a chance to voice all of your comments, you can and should submit them in writing. If you have a written statement, you may simply hand it in or read it aloud within the time limit, or do both. This hearing is scheduled to end at 9:00 PM. If you exceed your three minutes and we have time after all other speakers have commented, you may have another opportunity to speak for three minutes. You may have noticed that the court reporter will record everything that is said tonight. The transcript of these proceedings will become part of the record and will be included in the final EA. Finally, I would like to remind you to limit your comments to the proposed action and the analysis included in the draft EA. That is the purpose of this public comment period. There is nothing inappropriate about agreeing with previous speakers. Therefore, if you agree with a previous speaker on a particular issue, you may just state that you agree with them. This will be an effective way of streamlining the public comment process while still voicing your opinions and any concerns. We will start with comments from public officials. Following their remarks, we will take oral comments from those of you who have indicated interest on the cards, in the order that we receive them. Again, I wish to remind you of the three-minute limit on speaking. Our first speaker tonight is Bruce Gibson, and the second is Marty Brown. If you could come to this podium for the rest of the evening, speakers will be talking from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. I am Bruce Gibson. I'm the Second District County Supervisor for the County of San Luis Obispo and want to thank NSF and PG&E for being here to discuss this EA. As Dr. Nushenko indicated, I have participated in the development of the, somewhat in the review of the proposal before you. And for the record, and I'll talk about the materials submitted, I do hold a doctorate in geophysicist, geophysics. I was a research seismologist with expertise in seismic reflection, data processing, and acquisition issues. I've submitted for you a letter from our Board of Supervisors to the State Lands Commission, which is basically comments on the permit, for the permit hearing that's going to occur next Tuesday in Sacramento. It does recommend and recognize the importance of doing the 3D high-resolution surveys for the public benefit of greater understanding. It does also speak to issues that are somewhat beyond strictly environmental issues, such as appropriate compensation for fishing and other ocean-dependent interests that would be impacted by these activities. But in terms of the environmental, the clear message from our board is that we expect the highest level of environmental review, the highest level of mitigation for those impacts that are identified, that is covered by long-term monitoring, so that we know for certain that we have done the right thing through this NEPA process. Within the letter, you will see an extended technical discussion of some of the specifics of the way the survey is to be constructed within the footprint that's been identified as appropriate. These are specifics as to the data acquisition, data processing, and interpretation that, in our board's view, remain unresolved. And in short, for purposes of this discussion, I can summarize to say we have cause to believe there may be an approach, particularly to the data acquisition, that would be more efficient, take less time, and thus have less environmental impacts. We believe this needs public review and possible analysis as a formal alternative within the NEPA process. My other point, very briefly, is that in looking at at least summary discussions of the draft EA and the now-proposed final EIR that the State Lands Commission is processing under SEQA, I noticed there are some differences of opinion, some differences of impacts identified, and would urge that those differences be reconciled. I'm not as familiar with the NEPA process as I am with SEQA, but I believe that the information in the extensive EIR prepared by State Lands with a different consultant than this should be reconciled with your NEPA process.
Okay. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Marty Brown and Henrietta Groot is next.
Good evening. My name is Marty Brown. I live in Atascadero. I am here because of my concern about the airgun seismic testing and its potential impacts on sea life along our coast. Airguns are among the loudest forms of anthropogenic noise. I've cut some of this. There is no real knowledge of how other species perceive loudness. If deafness is caused, how will this affect reproduction and future populations? We are fortunate that, for now, whale, dolphin, and elephant seal migration routes are near our shores, as well as the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. The specter of whales and dolphins washing ashore and fleeing in panic is enough to require using the precautionary principle. For years, I have worked in the rescue and rehabilitation of wildlife here on the central coast. Many of the animals we care for are pelagic birds. At times, rehabilitation clinics up and down the coast are inundated with hundreds of starving brown pelicans, which brings to mind food supply. How will this airgun survey affect the food chain of ocean life? Some species are very selective in their diet, and others are threatened with dwindling numbers. No one can claim with certainty what the future impact will be on these animals, nor on their food supply. I realize that more seismic testing is important because of the many known faults near Diablo Canyon Nuclear Plant. The shoreline fault that runs 1,800 feet in front of the plant and intersects with the Diablo Cove fault that runs directly beneath the turbine building and Unit 1 containment structure are two of the many active faults that are of great concern. California falls into the highest seismic risk category. The frequency of earthquakes in the state is 10 times higher than for the world as a whole. California is no place for nuclear plants, period. If the commissioners vote to do this project and the alternatives to airgun blasting have been ruled out, use the lowest possible power array to obtain the information needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Henrietta Groot, and let me just remind you to make sure your microphone is close to here. Thank you.
The name is Henrietta Groot. I live in Los Osos. I have been involved in studying the impacts from once-through cooling over the years, the impact on marine life. I suggest, and I think Bruce Gibson said this too, I suggest alternative five is postpone the project. Don't rush into this until we are very sure we are doing the right thing. There is no need for a rush. PG&E still has permits until 2024 and '25. The NRC may not even approve a final permit for relicensing, as the recent freeze indicates. CalISO has started a study on the need for nuclear power in California, and the State Water Board is questioning the continued use of once-through cooling because of its enormous damage to the marine life, and particularly at Diablo, 1.5 billion gallons of cooling water with all the fish and vertebrate larvae that are contained in that. Besides reviewing the comments from various agencies, I suspect that all the necessary permits are not yet in place. And also, the question of who is going to pay for all this has not been decided and is going to be brought before the PUC. So what is the rush at this time? Be sure that you understand there will be damage to marine life, and who is going to compensate, the whales, the fish, the fish larvae?
Thank you. Elizabeth Browser and Joey Ricono are next.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bruce.
Sorry.
Tonight, I speak with a sense of optimism. For the first time in a long time, I feel on the side of history. California has only two nuclear plants, but that is going to change. San Onofre is on the verge of closure. Cost of holding, keeping this power plant in existence is being carefully scrutinized. And today, in the papers, you probably know, the NRC has decided to freeze all nuclear reactor constructions and operating licenses in the United States. So I agree with the preceding speaker. What is the rush to go into a program that has dire threat to existing sea life? We know that we have 13 faults. We don't have to be shown that. We know that Diablo is a problem. I say Diablo is our Edsel, so let's get rid of it.
Thank you. Christine Heinrichs will be after Joey Ricono.
Thanks for having us here tonight. Appreciate this opportunity for public comment. My name is Joey Ricono. I'm the Director of California Ocean Outfall Group. We've been dedicated to ending sewage waivers of the Clean Water Act in California. The first thing I'd like to do is invite you all to the Facebook page called Stop the Diablo Canyon Seismic Testing. That said, I would begin by noting that we are having the wrong conversation here. The conversation that we should be having is, when does the dismantling of the nuclear power plant that sits on these earthquake faults begin? I hear a lot of talk about safety, but anyone who's talking about safety is a liar if they want to continue this power plant sitting on earthquake faults. Makes perfect sense. That said, I move on to my next point, which is, we just completed the Marine Life Protection Act initiative, which created a series of marine-protected areas up and down the coast of California. The idea behind them was to create protected zones that would eventually return the oceans to a natural state of health and abundance. As you may know, the most protective of these is the SMR, the State Marine Reserve, and the one that's been the most studied and the most full of life with biological processes that are so vivid that they cascade out over the borders, is the Point Bouchon State Marine Reserve. Now, just like we've been mandated by the legislature and Sam Blakesley's bill to move ahead with seismic testing, we've been mandated by the same legislature to implement and honor the Marine Life Protection Act. There is a note, if any seismic testing goes on, it's going to have to, it's going to have to be in coordination with the no-take provisions of the State Marine Reserve at Point Bouchon. I don't see how you're going to have 260 decibel blasts and not cause take in State Marine Reserve there at Point Bouchon. It was very worrisome to watch the Fish and Game Commission shaking hands and crying and being so glad they just created these marine reserves. And they went through the whole thing at the meeting in Humboldt, and the very first thing on the agenda was PG&E asking to get rid of the Point Bouchon State Marine Reserve because of the hideous free-for-all of death that we know is soon to follow. Now, the best way to spend scientific money right now, in my opinion, would not be to do seismic testing that's sure to kill our great blue whales. The money would be much better spent on the more urgent idea of finding out what are we going to do with nuclear waste that is going to be dangerous for another million years. I thank you for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Christine Heinrichs and Jane Swanson is next.
Good evening. Christine Heinrichs, I'm from Cambria, California. I agree with those previous speakers, and I'd like to add that this project proposes to violate 12 major federal and state laws, including the Marine Mammal Protection Act. PG&E will request an incidental harassment authorization, among others, to allow them to violate the letter and the spirit of this law. Focusing on marine mammal effects, blue, gray, humpback, and fin whales are often in the area targeted for the survey. These animals rely on their hearing to navigate. The idea that high-impact sonar will not affect them is irrational, and it's not supported by observations. Startle responses have been observed in whales miles from seismic surveys. These blasts are estimated to be 190 decibels. Police use sound cannons to transmit voice commands at 162 decibels that can be heard five and a half miles away. Sirens at 140 decibels are considered punishing, and that's through the air. Water carries sound much better over longer distances. These magnificent animals are legally protected. They are concentrated in this area because it is their breeding migration. Blasting the area with airguns could not be better designed if the goal were to disrupt their breeding and chase them away from their home. Effects on Maro Bay stock of harbor porpoises will be dire. The proposed survey period would be considered sensitive for this species, says your report, while the calves are being nursed. Based on a wide range of laboratory and field studies, this species is considered very sensitive to anthropogenic noise effects on behavior and hearing. Goodbye harbor porpoises. The EA concludes that there are not going to be any effects on these animals. I don't know how you can conclude that from your own report. The effects of chasing these animals' prey, the fish they feed on, is considered an indirect impact, but if there isn't anything there for them to eat, they'll have to go elsewhere. The northern elephant seals are hardly mentioned in the draft EA, although the final EAR does take them into consideration. Since they're deep-water seals, they're seldom sighted, so the report ignores them, but that's where they live, exactly where they'll be bombarded with the sound. These animals and their ocean habitat are protected for good reasons. They are essential parts of the ecosystem on which the ocean health depends. They're important for the functioning of our local commercial fishing economy. They're welcomed on our coast where both residents and tourists appreciate them and learn about the natural world. Seismic testing and its effects are unacceptable for the central coast. These damages are illegal, and the coast is protected. If these laws and marine-protected areas don't protect them from this, what do they protect them from?
Thank you.
I have some additional.
Okay. I'll accept those. Jane Swanson's next, and then Lori French. Thank you.
I'm Jane Swanson. I'm representing the San Luis Obispo Mothers for Peace this evening. We will be emailing to the address up there a position statement, but at the moment, I'd like to make two general comments, questions, really. I need to question why only one particular ship, the Langseth, is I need to question why only one particular ship, the Langseth, is under consideration for doing this work. The fact that the ship is owned by the same agency that has issued the environmental assessment does raise questions about objectivity, and it would seem much more logical and correct to use the equipment that would do, give the best quality results with the least damage to the marine environment, rather than the one that's handy because it's owned and you want to put it to work and use it. That has not been justified from what I have been able to absorb. My second point is, you've got a link up there that says the draft EA and this presentation will be available at this spot. I'm there. We've got Wi-Fi here, thank goodness, and the EA is definitely there, but I don't see the PowerPoint, and I was understanding this to mean the PowerPoint presentation would be there, and I cannot find it there. So if there is a correction to that, I'd be very interested in that because it's a great reference point since we only have two days to get our final comments in. I'll let it go at that, and thank all the speakers for coming out tonight. It's great to hear the diversity of input. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori French and Andrew Christie is next.
Hi. My name is Lori French. I'm from Morro Bay. I'm here representing my husband and his brother Jeff and John French, who are fishing out of the area. And just for the record, there's a lot of commercial fishermen that are fishing out of the area now who are unable to attend. One of the things, we have the third generation coming home to fish crab with my husband and my brother this winter, so he could pay off some of his student loans. I'm not sure if you're really aware that there is a crab bloom off of the central coast that is at a record high for us, and my husband and brother-in-law, as long as a few other crab fishermen, were actually getting excited about fishing at home this winter instead of being gone. I'm very, very concerned that this bloom will be wiped out, and there will be long-term effects. Personally, also, I don't think there's been enough study to the long-term effects. We don't know what we're playing with here, and the '80s seismic surveys did have long-term consequences, and this one, this study is bigger and batter, so I don't see how the consequences could be smaller. Third, we're concerned about the marine mammals also. The survey is going to run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. How are they going to see the marine mammals at night? I mean, we can't. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Andrew Christie. And right now, I have no other speaker cards. Anyone else want to submit a speaker card? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I'm Andrew Christie. I'm the Director of the Santa Lucia Chapter of the Sierra Club, representing Sierra Club members in San Luis Obispo County. And for all Sierra Club members who came out tonight, please come by and see me so we can sign you in and keep you abreast of these proceedings for this entire project as they go forward. We have submitted written comments disputing the draft environmental assessment's finding of no significant impact on marine biological resources, noting that data presented in the draft EA supports the opposite conclusion, and that the final EIR of the California State Lands Commission has found this project will have significant and unavoidable impacts. Additionally, at a February 10 hearing of the California Public Utilities Commission, Dr. Douglas Campbell said of this project, quote, "Nothing in the planned additional surveys, both onshore and offshore, offers any prospect for any result beyond marginal improvement to what is already known," end quote. That statement is at odds with the position of the applicant and the independent peer-review panel, but it is not a statement made by a guy off the street or an activist critic of PG&E. I could take the rest of my time reading Dr. Hamilton's Curriculum vitae and qualifications into the record and not get halfway through. Suffice to say, he is a certified engineering geologist and was giving expert testimony as an expert on the subject of the seismic setting of the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant. His testimony was allowed into the record without challenge or cross-examination by PG&E's legal counsel. Prior to drafting the final environmental assessment, we urge you to seek out the details behind Dr. Campbell's expert opinion. His full testimony clearly implies environmentally preferable alternatives to the project which would meet the purpose and need for the proposed action and would do a better job of doing so than the project as currently designed, with greatly reduced impacts to marine resources. Additionally, the final EA should also revisit Alternative 3, rescheduling offshore surveys for the end of the year, the period that would be least harmful to whale species, and consider the advice from yesterday's San Luis Obispo County Board of Supervisors urging the evaluation of technology that would reduce the time of exposure of marine species to sound impulses from airgun arrays. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will remain here until 9:00 PM tonight. If you change your mind about speaking, you're welcome to come up, fill out a speaker card, find me, and we will be available. The team will be staying here till 9:00 PM as well. You're welcome to ask informal questions out there by the posters. Again, I want to thank those of you that are here for coming, and you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the time, or you can leave. It's your choice. Thank you. Caroline Blanco, could you speak for the record?
Good evening, folks. I'm Caroline Blanco, Assistant General Counsel from the National Science Foundation. And what we will do now, since we have no speakers who wish to speak at this moment, we will formally go off the record, and if somebody, but we will remain in this room until 9:00 PM, as Holly said. If anybody decides they would like to speak, we will go back on the record, and if nobody decides to speak at 9:00 PM, we will go back on the record to conclude the meeting. Thank you. We would like to go back on the record to make a clarification about the presentation. One of the speakers noted that they were unable to access this PowerPoint presentation on the website. It will be posted as soon as possible. We made the decision tonight, we thought it also would be helpful to the public, so we will be posting it as soon as possible. Thank you. Now we will go off the record at 8:12 PM. It is 9 o'clock PM, and we have had no public speakers since we last were on the record, and now we'll turn this over to Holly Smith to close out the meeting. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank you all for your participation tonight and your input. Please remember, the public comment period will close August 10, 2012, and comments can be emailed or emailed to the address shown on the slide. This public hearing is adjourned. Thank you.